He does have quite a stash.
Do not tell me, please do not tell me.
It's a different floor, that should help. Nope, not really.
All right, good evening Commissioners, we are live and ready to go, so I'll hand it off to you, Madam Chair.
Alrighty, well, good evening everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Clerk Moss, could you please do us the honors?
Yes, I would, Madam Chair, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting this regular session, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Commissioner Rogers.
Yep, here.
Commissioner Phi.
Yep, here.
Commissioner Threes.
Yep, here.
Vice Chair Willie.
Yep, we're here.
And Chair Harrington.
I'm right here, thank you very much, we have a full complement of five Commissioners. So just a couple of brief mentions on changes to the packet from the first original published version. We have a fifteenth item that was added to the consent agenda, and item nine has revised materials, so that's all we've got for you tonight. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to engage with us this evening?
Yes, we do, we have Dale Feek, Dale, can you hear us?
I can, Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair Harrington and Commissioners Rogers, Willie, Threes and Phi. I'm Dale Feek, spokesperson for Hillsborough Air and Water. Hillsborough and Water is a participant group organization of West County Citizen Action Network, WCQ. You should have received an email from me with three attachments related to increasing funding for the West County Law Library. When I first tried to file, well, in two thousand sixteen, I filed a petition of judicial review, sued, I sued DEQ, because DEQ issued to Intel Corporation air contaminant dischargement with flaws in it. When I first tried to file my petition for judicial review at the West County Circuit Court, the clerk said that I did not have it written in the correct format, and she recommended I go to the Washington County Law Library. I did, however, the law librarian had been there less than a year, and the books he pulled from me were not helpful. So I went to Multnomah County Court. The librarian there was very helpful, she pulled the books on petition for judicial review, pulled the forms necessary for me to rewrite my petition following the format, the court clerk would accept. I did that, paid two hundred and fifty-two dollars and got a case number. I soon realized that I needed the expertise of the Multnomah County Law Library librarian to act as, not to act as my attorney, but to get me the information to process my petition for judicial review. The short version of that is, it worked, got in court, and I was Multnomah Circuit Court before a judge. And so the summary of what I'm going to say of that is, the West County Law Library just has understaffed, under-materialized, and was not helpful. The funding of West County Law Library, just an adequate level of funding is not enough. The professions, professionals, citizens, and residents deserve the highest level of financial support for the law library, staff, materials, and equipment. It's too bad that Washington County had to deal with contamination and more pollution, because I wasn't successful with my court case. I was just missed because I filed in the wrong court, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek, would any other members of the public wish to comment to the board at this time? Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Oh, I just want to add for Mr. Feek's benefit. We had a update during our work session today on the results of the short session and our lobbying team's results for helping us work on getting additional funding for the law library as provided by the state of Oregon. We will continue our efforts to try and ensure that there are additional funds provided so that we can offer a law library that is most effective for our community. And let me make sure, by referring to Mr. Carr and Ms. Angie, I want to make sure that I represented that correctly, and to see if there's anything in addition that you might wish to add.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you, Mr. Feek, for your comments. The law library is valued service of Washington County, and we've heard that from you as well as other community members. And so Chair Harrington, to your direct question, you are not incorrect. And our GR team does continue to actively advocate for full funding for our law library services from the state.
Anything to add, Mr. Carr?
No, I think, I'm amazed at the quality of our law library and the work that Mr. Vandusen does, so I'm sorry that the commentator had a bad experience, and I hope that his experience is better in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Moss, do we have Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else who might wish to speak with us this evening?
I know, Madam Chair, we have no one else at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of fifteen items, two sets of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, four items from Support Services, two items from Health and Human Services, four items from Land Use and Transportation, one item from the County Administrative Office, County Council, and one item from the County Administrative Office. Are there any questions from the Commission, or is there a motion to adopt today's consent agenda? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Threes. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to proclamations. This evening, we have two. The first is a result of Commissioner Rogers' efforts. Commissioner Rogers, I would like to provide you with the opportunity to read this proclamation that we have the benefit of, thanks to you.
I would defer to Kevin, let him, but I had to have some comments, I'll make, well, we read the proclamation first, Kevin, do you mind doing that?
Absolutely, Commissioner Rogers. Proclamation, Board of Commissioners for Washington County, proclamation and pledge in support of Ukraine, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, Russian President Vladimir Putin launched a premeditated, unprovoked war that has brought about catastrophic loss of life and human suffering to the people of Ukraine. And whereas, since this invasion, hundreds of civilians, innocent children, have been killed by Russian forces in brutal attacks on the Ukrainian neighborhoods and other non-military targets, and millions have been forced to flee their homes, creating panic and chaotic conditions in nearby neighboring countries. And whereas these deliberate acts of terror by the Russian military against the Ukrainian people reverberate across the globe, causing great anguish for the entire human race, including the good and decent people of Russia. And whereas the people of Ukraine have friends and loved ones around the world who are deeply affected by this invasion, including many who live and work within the state of Oregon, the Portland metropolitan area, and right here in Washington County. And whereas numerous leaders of the free world, including the President of the United States, humanitarian and non-governmental organizations, major US corporations and worldwide companies, and some state and local governments have joined together in response to impose economic sanctions against the Russian government and companies headquartered in Russia. And whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners deplore and condemn these atrocities, as well as the architect of this war, President Putin. And whereas in solidarity with Ukraine, we pledge to immediately examine Washington County business practices and investment of public funds, and cease any and all purchases knowingly made from any company in Russia, effectively boycotting all goods, supplies, and services provided by the companies headquartered in Russia. Nothing in this resolution is intended to harm Washington County businesses that sell Russian products. Now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners calls upon our partners in local government, as well as those in business, education, healthcare, and other sectors of our local economy. Join us in this pledge of support for the people of Ukraine, unless and until Russian troops cease hostilities on Ukrainian soil, and the Russian government recognizes the sovereignty of the nation of Ukraine.
Thank you, Kevin, just a few remarks. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of our wonderful staff who contributed. Julie McLeod, who is usually faceless at these meetings, but we all know what an effort she puts in. Tanya was involved, Tom was involved, many others. Most of you know, I don't get too ramped up about a lot of things, but in this particular case, when atrocities happen in the world, especially, it's a genocide from really what should be war crimes, it's intolerable. And I also want to give credit to this board. This is just a reaffirmation, maybe a little bit more meat on a proclamation that the chair brought a week ago, which we supported, and I thought it was a great resolution. I just wanted to make it well-known that we won't do business with companies in Russia. We will not invest in companies in Russia through any pension plan or any other activity. That we do not tolerate this sort of action, so kudos to this board for a week ago, and to the chair for bringing the original resolution, and this just puts into action maybe what our words were. So I think I've said enough, I'm just sick of watching people die on TV, this is a horrible, horrible, horrible situation. So, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I would respectfully move to approve this resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers and a second from Commissioner Threes. Do any other Commissioners wish to make any comments before we vote on this motion to adopt this proclamation? Nope, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this proclamation, please vote by raising your hand, thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The proclamation passes unanimously, five to zero, thank you again, Commissioner Rogers. Next, we'll move to our second proclamation of this evening, and it is to recognize March twenty twenty-two as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Washington County. And I know we have a couple of our staff members, and I already see Ms. Mira Semantel, who is our interim Director of Health and Human Services. And I see that Clerk Moss is advancing others, so Ms. Semantel, I'll turn it over to you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, good evening, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. My name is Mira Semantel, I'm the interim Director of Health and Human Services, and I'm so pleased to be here tonight. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to have our staff here, as well as some guests who will be speaking to proclaiming March twenty twenty-two as Developmental Disabilities Month. With that, I am pleased to turn it over to Kirsten Oster, one of our Developmental Disabilities Supervisors. Kirsten, go ahead.
Hello, everyone, good evening, Chair Harrington and County Commissioners. My name is Kirsten Oster, and I am the Program Supervisor with the Washington County Developmental Disabilities Division. And it is my honor to introduce to you this year's speakers for the twenty twenty-two Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month proclamation. Our first speaker is Blanca Estella Mija Salazar. Blanca is a mother and dedicated advocate for her son Raymond, who has been accessing Didi services for almost fifteen years. Translation services will be provided by their services coordinator and Helena Carter, who is the lead services coordinator with the Developmental Disabilities Division, supporting children in the community accessing Didi services, and the bilingual team of services coordinators. Please join me in welcoming Blanca and Angelina.
Ser mamá de un niño especial, te exige convertirte en maestra para educarlo. Abogada para defenderlo, doctora para atenderlo, y detective para investigar hasta la más mínima prueba que le pueda ayudar a tener una mejor calidad de vida. Incluso, convertirte en oradora para poder compartir su historia. Buenas tardes, tengan cada uno de ustedes presentes a través de esta plataforma. Mi nombre es Blanca Mejía, y estoy aquí para compartir la historia de mi hijo Raymond. Un joven, el cual en el año dos mil cuatro, con tan solo dos años y medio de edad, sufrió un ataque al corazón. El cual lo dejó en estado de coma, con daño cerebral irreparable. Pérdida del habla, la vista paralítico totalmente. Dejando nuestra familia destruida por el dolor completamente. Los médicos nos pidieron fuera desconectado de la vida artificial, pues él no tenía oportunidad de vivir, moriría en segundos, minutos, o algunas horas. Petición que nosotros no aceptamos. Han pasado ya diecisiete años, y nuestro hijo Raymond aún sigue luchando por vivir. Los desafíos han sido gigantes, pero nuestro amor por él así han sido aún más fuertes que los desafíos. Durante estos diecisiete años, la condición médica de Raymond ha ido empeorando. Hay daños irreparables, que lo tienen constantemente al borde de la muerte, y paralizado en una cama. Teniendo un protocolo médico extremo. También cuenta con un protocolo para el control de sus alergias. Depende de tres personas para cuidarle durante cada veinticuatro horas. Ha sido necesario incluso que mi esposo deje su trabajo, por todo el cuidado que nuestro hijo necesita. Haber sido aceptado en el programa de servicios humanos y deshabilidades del Condado de Washington ha sido para nuestro hijo Raymond una gran bendición. Su coordinadora Angelina junto con todo el equipo trabajan arduamente junto con nosotros para brindar y buscar servicios que nuestro hijo Raymond necesita para que él pueda tener una mejor calidad de vida. Ellos como equipo tienen grandes desafíos. Cuando ellos han tenido que decirnos, no fue posible conseguir este recurso para Raymond, podemos notar y escuchar su tristeza. Hemos tenido la bendición que nuestro hijo Raymond tenga un equipo sumamente compasivo para luchar con él. Han logrado poner una salida de emergencia en nuestro hogar para que la ambulancia pueda trasladar a nuestro hijo Raymond muy rápidamente, pues un segundo en su condición puede ser fatal. Al igual que en momentos de crisis, están en todo momento apoyándonos, logrando que no nos sintamos solos como padres. Nos han brindado una enfermera que nos orienta y realiza llamadas a los médicos, cuando los médicos no nos escuchan a nosotros. Asimismo, luchan por buscar las máquinas y materiales que nuestro hijo necesita. Angelina realiza constantemente llamadas a la seguridad, a la farmacia, cuando nosotros no somos escuchados. Araceli Sandoval, una mujer maravillosa que siempre encuentra una manera para ayudarnos, pues él investiga en una área y en otra hasta encontrar la respuesta que necesitamos. Y esto es solo por mencionar alguna de las muchas cosas que este equipo maravilloso hace por nuestro hijo Raymond y por cada uno de sus clientes. Pues enlistar todo lo que ellos realizan, este tiempo no sería suficiente para poderles comunicar todo lo que este equipo realiza. Por eso hoy, decíamos agradecer a todo el equipo en nombre de nuestro hijo Raymond, pues a ustedes debemos que nuestro hijo Raymond tenga una mejor calidad de vida. Me despido de ustedes, respetables invitados, recordándoles que los desafíos de este programa son muchos, pues los recursos que tienen no son suficientes, ya que día a día los clientes y sus necesidades aumentan. Gracias.
Okay. Being the mother of a special needs child requires you to become a teacher to educate him, a lawyer to defend him, a doctor to treat him, a detective to investigate even the smallest thing that can help him to have a better quality of life, and even become a presenter to share our testimony. Good evening to all of you here tonight through this platform. My name is Blanca Mejía, and I am here to share the story of my son Raymond, a young man who in two thousand and four, at just two and a half years old, suffered a heart attack which left him in a coma. He suffered irreparable brain damage, loss of speech, total visual paralysis, leaving our family completely destroyed by pain. The doctors asked us to disconnect Raymond from artificial life, because according to them, he had no chance to live. He would die in seconds, minutes, or even a few hours. It was a request that we did not accept. Seventeen years have passed, and our son Raymond is still struggling to live. The challenges have been enormous, but our love for him has been even stronger than the challenges. During these seventeen years, Raymond's medical condition, which does not have a specific name, has increased the irreparable damage, constantly placing him on the verge of death. He has very complex medical needs that require extreme care and protocols, including a protocol to control severe and potentially fatal allergies. He depends on three people to take care of him twenty-four seven. It has been necessary for my husband to leave his job because of all the care our son requires. Being accepted into the Washington County Developmental Disabilities Program has been a great blessing in Raymond's life. His coordinator, along with the entire team, works hard to provide us and seek to provide and seek services that our son needs to have a better quality of life. They, as a team, have great challenges. At times, they have had to tell us certain resources were unavailable for Raymond, and we can see their sadness. We have been blessed that our son has a very compassionate team to fight for him. They have managed to put an emergency exit in our home, so that the ambulance can move him quickly when needed, because in a split second, his condition could turn fatal. They support us in times of crisis, allowing us not to feel alone. They have provided us with a nurse who guides us and makes calls to the doctors when doctors do not want to listen to us. They struggle along with us to find the medical equipment or resources that our son needs. Angelina makes calls to insurance or pharmacy when we are not heard. Araceli Sandoval, a wonderful woman who always finds ways to help us, because she investigates in one way or another until she finds an answer. Thanks to the entire team, we thank you on behalf of Raymond, because of you, Raymond has a better quality of life. I say goodbye to you, respectable guests, and remind you that the challenges of this program are many, because the resources they have are not enough as clients and their needs increase day to day, thank you.
Thank you, Blanca and Angelina. Blanca and Raymond's experiences with systematic barriers is a common occurrence for the individuals and families we support. Over eight percent of the community we support is Spanish-speaking, and our bilingual team has been essential in helping families access services and overcome systematic language barriers. All the services coordinators in the division work to navigate, advocate, and partner with families in overcoming similar challenges every day. Next, I'd like to introduce Shanna Simmons. Shanna is a young woman who is accessing residential services with the support from her services coordinator, Katie Porter, who is also the lead services coordinator in supporting the residential team in our division. Shanna, along with her fiance, Ron, have been busy planning their wedding for the summer and are joining us today to share her experiences. Please join me in welcoming Shanna Simmons.
Okay, we met one time, and we're, we're, we love the same things, we love the same foods, it's just weird, because we have the same size feet and same size fingers.
With your favorite, please.
Okay, here's what I wrote. Hello, my name is Shanna Simmons, I have been here with Able Light since two thousand and nine. And I love, I love um, I live in Elsia location since twenty fifteen. When I was a little girl, I always dreamed of getting married and having a family, my own. Ever since you, the years, over the years, Albertina, Able Light was, and Washington County have helped me move closer to my goal. I lost my mother last year, and that made my life really difficult for me. I was very sad and feeling down. Going through that, the pandemic. Pandemic.
Pandemic.
Yeah. And it added to the sadness, I started to change my, when I met Ron Winchester. And randomly
A random I-hop.
Random I-hop, run, and became a good friend. And now engaged. Able Light, the staff, has sponsored us, supported us in a relationship. And making us, making sure we get to see each other quite frequently. Um, frequently, Ron visits me and my staff, make home and staff.
Make sure.
Make sure we have everything we need. Katie Porter and Washington County DND program have been a big help too. She said, she and my team are currently working on a plan for Ron and I to be able to live together. Katie, working and with Ron's service coordinator. Make coordinator too, making sure we both get, keep supports when we live together. And greatly appreciate the efforts of Katie Porter and my team and to make my dreams come true. Having a family come true. I look, I look forward to continuing to work with the team and achieve all my goals in life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shanna, and thank you, Chair Harrington and County Commissioners, for your time this evening. Now, Colin Fitzgerald, the Developmental Disabilities Division Manager, will read the twenty twenty-two Developmental Disabilities Month proclamation.
Great, thank you, Kirsten. Proclamation, Board of Commissioners for Washington County Development of Disabilities Awareness Month, March twenty twenty-two. Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience, and whereas developmental disabilities in Washington County touch one of every ten families. And whereas people with developmental disabilities have many skills, talents, and abilities to contribute to their neighborhoods and communities. And whereas, everyone wins when people with, excuse me, everyone wins when people with developmental disabilities receive the supports and opportunities. They need to be contributing members of their communities. And whereas, the abilities of people with developmental disabilities have been traditionally and systematically undervalued. And whereas, public attitudes are the biggest barrier to full community integration and inclusion of people with developmental disabilities. And whereas, public awareness about developmental disabilities promotes acceptance and understanding, and decreases prejudice and misconception. Now therefore be it resolved that on this fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two, Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-two as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Washington County. We call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, business and schools in Washington County to recognize the ability of individuals with developmental with developmental disabilities to make significant contributions to their communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, Ms. Simmons, and also to, uh, Ms. Salazar uh, for coming before us as well as to you as well, Ms. Oster and, uh, Ms. Carter for helping us, uh, hear more about the importance of this work and to you too as well, Ms. Dantle. So Commissioners, we have a, a proclamation before us. Do you, Commissioner Trese would like to make a motion for us to adopt this proclamation as read and second from Vice Chair Willie? Would any Commissioners like to, uh, make any comments at all? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
You know, a wa- a while back, I was advocating that we do a better job of providing, I guess, examples and communication on our proclamations and this was over the top. So, thank you for the two presenters. Um, just honest and, um, just gives us encouragement that the work that we do in developmental disabilities arena, uh, is actually working. And it's money well spent and thank you very much for coming forward tonight and giving us your story. It was great.
It definitely touches lives and improves lives. Thank you very much for the time and effort that you put in, in serving members of our community, but also in highlighting that work today. So we have a motion and a second. I don't see any other Commissioner comments, so all those in favor of adopting March twenty twenty-two as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Thank you Commissioners. Uh, anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously five to zero. Thank you again to our guests for joining us and, uh, sharing your voice and life experiences with us. Really appreciate it. Good night, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you Chair Harrington, thank you Commissioners, have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll move on to the public hearing section, oh, excuse me, Boards and Commissions. Uh, we have two items for today. The first is to appoint members to the Housing Advisory Committee. We, uh, had a presentation on this at work session. So this evening, we have a proposal to appoint Gina Briggs, Nina Stafford, and Corinne Arendes, John Epstein, and Nina Spar as members to the Housing Advisory Committee. Each, excuse me, each with terms ending March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding these appointments? So moved from Commissioner Rogers with a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hands. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to appointing members to the Rural Roads Operations and Maintenance Advisory Committee. And this is a committee that, uh, I recall, uh, Vice Chair Willie is very active with. And thanks to his efforts and those of staff, we are here tonight with a proposal to appoint to the, to ROMAC, the Rural Roads Operations and Maintenance Advisory Committee, Elizabeth Dudley to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And, uh, a returning member, Gary Virgin, to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And I would like to thank Gary for stepping forward, uh, to continue to serve on ROMAC as the, the, um, recruitment process didn't yield any new, uh, new members from our committee. So after he had a break in service since December twenty nineteen, he has stepped forward again to serve the community. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to the proposal? Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Vice Chair Willie, a second from Commissioner Trese. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Commissioner Trese? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you Commissioners. Next, we'll move on to public hearings and this evening, we have four different public hearings. The first one, it comes to us from Clean Water Services and this is with regard to the Baum Grove Dam Removal Project number seven thousand one hundred and twenty-two. To exempt it from competitive bidding, the competitive bidding process and approve the use of a request for proposals process. Uh, do we have any sort of staff report?
Yes, thank you Chair Harrington. Uh, Matt Brennan is here today from Clean Water Services to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name's Matt Brennan. I'm a division manager in the Natural Systems Enhancement and Stewardship Department at Clean Water Services. And tonight, we're requesting an exemption from the competitive bidding process for the removal of Baum Grove Dam, a fish passage barrier on Gales Creek. Instead, we would like to, we propose to use a request for proposals process to award the construction contract. The Baum Grove Dam Removal Project is in a highly sensitive and that dynamic natural environment. The request for proposals approach allows the district to select a contractor that has the experience to meet the specialized construction needs of the project. Any construction contractor holding a valid license from the Oregon Construction Contractors Board and able to meet the district's bonding and insurance requirements may submit a proposal for this project. The district is particularly interested in contractors that have experience with in-stream construction and working in sensitive natural areas. A growing number of contractors have worked on projects of this type and have developed the expertise that's needed on this project. The cost of this expertise is, is no higher than the cost of other types of construction expertise. The exemption and selection of a contractor with specific in-stream experience should reduce the potential for construction change orders and for costly environmental regulation violations. This will also benefit the public by better protecting natural resources, which are at risk during in-stream construction. The district will also evaluate contractors on their approach to and implementation of diversity, equity, and inclusivity. Project grants require taking steps to assure that the district and contractors that hire subcontractors assure that minority and women-owned businesses are used when possible. Required steps include placing such businesses on solicitation lists, engaging in active outreach, and project task allocation and scheduling that's designed to encourage minority and women-owned business participation. That concludes the staff report. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? I know this is a project we've heard about before and Commissioner Rogers, you've probably, uh, been tracking this project the longest of all five of us. I remember learning about this dam when I was a metro counselor. And at first, we had great fun imagining like little kids who had just watched the cartoons on TV about having dynamite put in place and each of us dropping the stick down right in the charger box. But that certainly goes against, uh, protecting all the fish and wildlife in this area. But we had good fun in our imagination nonetheless. But I'm really happy to see that, uh, we have good public, um, practice, uh, involved here to ensure that this is handled properly, uh, in, um, in all the contracting and to, to realize the need to remove this, uh, really old dam so that, um, fish and wildlife can, can benefit, so. Thank you for the staff report, Mr. Brennan. So, we need to hold a public hearing, so I'd like to op- open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who would like to testify or provide input during this public hearing?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had no one that signed up. Would any members of public wish to provide testimony on this public hearing item? I'll give you just a second to raise your hands if you have comments. Not seen any hands, Madam Chair.
All right, well with that then, we'll close tonight's public hearing. And what we're looking for now is a motion to, uh, approve the, or adopt the findings to exempt the Baum Grove Dam Removal Project number seven thousand one hundred and twenty-two from the competitive bidding process and approve the use of the request for appro- approval, excuse me, request for proposals process. Thank you Commissioner Rogers for the motion and the second from Vice Chair Willie. Do any Commissioners have any questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to a, uh, public hearing needed for consideration of a resolution and order to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two supplemental budget. And I see that we have our interim CFO, Mr. Rodney Rhodes. Take it away, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you Chair Harrington, uh, good evening Board of Commissioners. As you know, Oregon state law allows for the, uh, supplemental budget process to be done in the fall, spring, and summer. Uh, these opportunities allow for the county to be a little bit more flexible in addressing changing needs that have occurred since the budget adoption that took place in June. This time around, for clarity and transparency, we have combined both normal budget adjustments and legally required supplemental requests into this supplemental budget process before you tonight. We would ask for adoption of the order and resolution attached and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the content of the order and resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I believe we had, uh, the benefit of a work session as well as briefings on the content of this matter previously. But before we have a public hearing, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open, open, open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to, uh, testify during the public hearing?
Uh, we have no one signed up. Would any members of public wish to provide, uh, public testimony on this supplemental budget item? Please utilize the raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you Clerk Moss. With that, I'll close tonight's public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the resolution and order to approve and adopt the Washington County Supplemental Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Thank you Commissioner Trese and a second from Vice Chair Willie. Are there any additional comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this motion? Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Next, we'll move on to, uh, a lighting matter. Tonight, we have an amendment, uh, for the Service District for Lighting, SDL, Southwest Eightieth Avenue between Southwest Maple Leaf Street and Southwest Spruce Street Assessment Area number six twenty, also known as the Spruce Terrace subdivision. So, uh, Mr. Roberts, do we have a staff report at all?
We do, Chair, thank you. Um, Stacia Sheeler is our Street Lighting Service District for Lighting Coordinator. So Stacia is actually gonna run through a brief presentation and then we'll both be able to answer any questions that you have and, um, look forward to the public hearing.
Hi there, Ms. Sheeler, welcome. I think you're muted still. There you go.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just a little technical difficulty there. Um, I'm Stacia Sheeler, I'm the Service District for Lighting Coordinator for Land use and Transportation. Um, and tonight, uh, tonight's public hearing is held to approve changes and establish a new annual assessment for the Southwest Eightieth between Maple Leaf Lane and Spruce Street Assessment Area. The SDL ordinance requires we hold a public hearing when we're amending in this existing area. Spruce Terrace is a proposed subdivision within the existing assessment area. There are currently thirty-six tax lots and eight streetlights in the assessment area. The new subdivision will add four additional tax lots and two new streetlights. Public notices were mailed on March second to all property owners within the existing area. SDL ordinance three requires written objection by more than fifty percent of the property owners be received by the close of this hearing to terminate the proposed streetlights. At this time, we have received one letter of objection and no others. Following public hearing, staff recommends approval of the resolution in order to amend the existing assessment area and install additional street lighting. On the next slide, you can see the same information that I've just discussed with you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. There's a map on that next slide. And then, uh, approval of the resolution order. Next slide, the end.
Could I ask a brief question?
Of course.
I was just wondering if you could summarize the objection that we received by writing?
Yes, I can. Um, uh, we received an objection to the street lighting. The gentleman who wrote the letter indicated that the developer should have to pay for everything, not the nearby property owners. And that was, that was the end of that.
Okay.
I did talk with him on the phone and he understands that's probably not typically how we are gonna move forward.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us on this matter?
We have, no one signed up, Madam Chair. Uh, I see one hand in our attendees list, so Lonnie Johnson. Lonnie, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, I can.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you all for having this forum. I did receive the letter, I received it just a couple of days ago, I technically, uh, sometimes I forget to check my mail. And I guess my only question in this whole situation is, I live on Eightieth, longtime resident, been here about twenty years. I'm all about lighting up the streets, but my question is, according to this map, both of those streetlights are gonna be on Spruce Street. So I'm wondering what the benefit is for us up Eightieth, all the way up to Maple Leaf? Where the benefit is for us when the lighting is specifically on Spruce Street? And I'm just wondering if I'm missing some technical stuff or?
I can answer that question for you, um, if I may. The current assessment area includes several residents on the Eightieth, um, portion of that neighborhood. Um, and in the past, when the development was done, it encompasses several different streets. So when we go to modify that assessment area, whether that, those new lights be on one particular road or another, it does affect that entire assessment area as a group. And so all of the streetlights are equally, um, the cost is equally shared between all of those develop, those property owners. Does that, does that help, make that more clear for you?
So basically, you're, so basically, everything's in a pot and it gets divided.
That is correct. It's equally divided among the property owners within that assessment area that was previously established.
So, to lay this down a little bit, those who live on Spruce are paying for the lights on Maple Leaf as well.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that's the information that I was kinda looking forward to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I, again, I appreciate this forum and being able to, uh, speak in it. And I appreciate everything that you guys do as well.
Please feel free to reach out if you, if I can provide a map or any other detail.
No, I think that answers the questions. I was, that's the only thing I was wondering about. And I think that does it.
Could I ask a question related to Ms. Johnson's question? In the materials that we have this evening, uh, for this particular service for this particular Service District for Lighting, do we have materials here that show us the entire Service District for Lighting? Or this, this area number? So in terms of the billing, and that's what I'm trying to get at, could you explain to me how the the specific billing works in terms of these different area numbers?
So each area number, that, the number that you see, I think what you're looking at is there's a number assigned to each Service District for Lighting when it's established initially with the board. And whether that development consists of ten lots or a hundred lots, that entire area is encompassed as one assessment area. And no matter how many lights are there, one, ten, twenty, how many ever, the cost to energize and maintain those lights is equally divided among those total tax lots. So based on development, there's not really, it's not really a perfect rectangle or a perfect square. They can be very, very interesting diagrams of development. Is that what you're looking for, Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that further explanation from Ms. Johnson's testimony. And thanks for, thanks for joining us this evening, Ms. Johnson, and hanging in there with regard to my question from what you provided during this public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else who wishes to participate in this public hearing?
Would any other members of public please utilize the raise hand function to comment on this public hearing? Not seeing any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'd like to close this evening's public hearing. And thank you, Ms. Scheller, for handling those various questions. I appreciate it. It's tough to be on the spot sometimes. So commissioners, at this juncture, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution and order. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second? A second from Vice Chair Willie? All those in favor of adopting this resolution and order to amend the Southwest Eightieth Avenue between Southwest Maple Leaf Street and Southwest Spruce Street Assessment Area Number six twenty? Please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. I just need to go now to my online packet for the next item. The next item is to approve an amendment to the Service District Lighting for Southwest Eighty-seventh Avenue, north of Southwest Canyon Lane Assessment Area Number five hundred and thirty-one Riverside at Sylvan Heights. Phew. First, we'll have a staff report.
Good evening. It's me again. So Chair and Commissioners, this is Stacia Sheeler with Land Use and Transportation, Service District for Lighting Coordinator. Today's public hearing is being held to approve the changes and establish a new annual assessment for the Southwest Eighty-seventh Avenue, north of Southwest Canyon Lane Assessment Area. S D L ordinance requires county hold a public hearing to amend an existing assessment area. Riverside at Sylvan Heights is a proposed subdivision within the existing assessment area. There are currently seventy-six tax lots and nine streetlights in the assessment area. The new subdivision will add ten additional tax lots and one new streetlight. A public notice was mailed on March second to all property owners within the existing assessment area. S D L ordinance number three requires written objection by more than fifty percent of the property owners be received by the close of this hearing to terminate the proposed streetlights. At this time, we have received no opposition. Following the public hearing, staff recommends approval of the resolution and order to amend the existing assessment area and install additional street lighting. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration. And again, here's this map pointing out the area. The detail I've just discussed was in the previous slide and looking for your resolution approvals, the resolution in order to amend the existing assessment area.
Thank you, Ms. Sheeler. Commissioners, do you have any questions of our presenter? Nope. Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak during this public hearing?
We had no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of public wish to provide public testimony on this hearing item for Sylvan Heights? Please utilize the raise hand function. Give you just a moment. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
All righty. With that, I'll close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve this amendment? Thank you, Commissioner Tries. Do we have a second? Second from Vice Chair Willie. Thank you. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or signaling yes. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Next, we have one action item. And this is to authorize the defe- defeasance of full faith and credit borrowing and amending the related loan agreement with the Housing Authority for Washington County. And I'm going to assume that Ms. Galares, our Deputy Finance Officer and Brad Anderson are with us. There you are for a brief staff report. Oh, sorry, Mr. Rodney Rose, our interim Chief Financial Officer is back with us.
No worries. I think Brad is going to handle this one, and I'm just here for backup support.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Harrington. What you have before you right now is basically the county's side of an earlier approval that your board did for the Housing Authority on March first. It, what we're doing here is amending the loan agreement between the Housing Authority and Washington County to allow for the Housing Authority to access income tax credits, private activity, and tax-exempt bonds and seller financing to pay the debt and rehabilitate for properties that there are intending intending to rehabilitate, including the bridge at Bull Mountain. And so we need to amend the loan agreement between the Housing Authority and Washington County. And we need to allow for the defeasance of, a partial defeasance of the bonds so that this transaction can be completed and comply with all state and federal laws. So what staff's asking is for the board to approve the associated resolution order with this agenda item and allow the action to move forward. Are there any questions for me or Mr. Rhodes on this?
Nope, not seeing any. Terrific. Well, with no questions from the board, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution and order? Thank you, Commissioner Tries. Do we have a second? We have a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor of adopting this resolution and order, which encapsulates those actions as previously described, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Oh, there we are. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. That's terrific. So now the team will be able to move forward with this financing, this sound financing, so that we can extend the useful life of those really valuable, permanent, affordable housing homes. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Chair.
That brings us to public communication, our second section, this time affording members of our community with up to five minutes to speak with us this evening. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us?
We had no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of public wish to address the board at this point for up to five minutes? Please utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
All righty. Thank you, Clerk Moss. That brings us to board announcements. So I just have two, two different things I'd like to reference. The first is our normal flow of commissioner meetings on this Thursday. No. On April seventh, excuse me, in a couple of weeks, instead of having our normal Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable, we're going to just firmly put on our Clean Water Services Board of Directors hat and have a session for board training and business planning that day from nine AM to two thirty PM, as described on page two hundred and fifty-five of the board packet for this evening's meeting. So looking ahead, next Tuesday, everyone should have a wonderful spring break from our public school system. There are no board meetings on Tuesday, March twenty-second. Similarly, Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, we'll also not have any board meetings. We'll pick right back up in the month of April. What's that expression? April showers bring May flowers. So we'll meet on Tuesday, April fifth, with a work session starting at nine AM. Notice the nine AM time. We changed our, our rules and procedures. So our work sessions will start effective with the new month of April at nine AM. The Housing Authority Board of Directors Monthly Meeting will convene at nine AM. And then the board meeting will convene approximately at eleven AM. And then the board will reconvene in work session after that meeting concludes, and we have a lunch break. I already mentioned the Tuesday, April seventh, training session. Then on Tuesday, April twelfth, we'll have a work session all that day that starts at nine AM. The following Tuesday, April nineteenth, work session at nine, board meeting at ten, work session reconvenes after. Then on Thursday, the twenty-first, we have our Board Budget Committee Orient, excuse me, not board. We have a Budget Committee Orientation at six thirty in the evening. So if you're interested in learning more about what it means to be a Budget Committee Member and what the Washington County Budget is all about, please do join us. That will be hosted on Zoom. And then on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, we're right back to our pair of meetings with a work session at two in the afternoon and a board meeting at six thirty in the evening, just like we did today. Are there any other board announcements this evening? Seeing none, I'm interested in a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. We have a motion from Commissioner Tries. Do we have a second? A second from Vice Chair Willie? All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Good evening, folks. Enjoy the rest of your evening. And for those of you having next week off as spring break, whether you're traveling or enjoying a staycation, please do enjoy yourself, and we'll see you back here the end of March. Good night.